Legal department, so we're still going over item by item on it and making sure we're not doing anything wrong.
Okay.
And then as soon as we get a final copy, we'll get it back to everybody.
Very good. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, they be approved as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll move right into our Development Review Committee, Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By Frenchman Woods. One, Council Massie Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, you have been furnished a copy of the comments.
Yes, I have.
And do you agree with those?
Yes, I do.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next item is item B, SD 2020-6, Fire Station 6th Edition, Lot 1, Preliminary Platte Site Plan Review of a Fire Station at 3919 Pike Avenue. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted, is the applicant here?
It's getting up.
Okay, yes. You have been furnished a copy of the conditions from the subdivision committee?
Yes, sir.
Do you approve with those?
We do.
Please give us your name for the record.
Thomas Palnil, with Thomas Engineering.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the secretary to show that I abstained on that last item.
Okay, thank you.
Item C, SD 2020-7, McCain Mall Edition, Block 2, Lot 5, Replat Site Plan Review of a Commercial Building at 3901 Warden Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted, is the applicant here?
I'm John Palnil, with Thomas Engineering, representing applicant.
You have been submitted with a copy of the recommendations from the Design Review Committee, are you in favor of those?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2020-9, McLarty Toyota Automotive Group, Preliminary Platte Site Plan Review of a Parking Lot at the Northeast Corner of East 46th and Smokey Lane. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Number eight.
We'll cover it next.
Well, go ahead with E, being how he has called it. This is on the McLarty Automotive Group. Is the applicant here?
Philip Lewis, Philip Lewis Engineering.
You have been submitted a copy of the comments from the Design Review Committee, are you in agreement with those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application?
Yes, I would.
Yes, please come. Please, please come to the rostam and give us your name, please.
Sally Etterington and Tamika Alfred. We are manager and assistant manager of the Fountain Blue North Apartments that are adjacent to the land that you're talking about. Our main concern is, we would like to know exactly what they're putting in there, are they going to pave, is there going to be a privacy fence? We're more concerned with our residents being adjacent to that property. We'd like a little bit more information.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chambers, would you like to answer that?
Yes, ma'am. The parking lot is a standard curb and guttered asphalt parking lot. One tree is required for every six parking spaces, so it'll be heavily shaded with trees. The privacy fence is your fence, happens to be on their property, so.
Gotcha.
That will be interesting, but that's between y'all, not us. But there is an existing fence there, and they're required to provide buffer plantings along that fence.
Wonderful.
But it's a standard parking lot, no houses, all the lights are to be directed.
No buildings or structures, just a lot?
It's an overflow parking lot, and no lights are supposed to, all the lights are supposed to be focused away from your property and things like that.
Okay, that's what we wanted to know.
And I'm seeing the applicant nodding his head that I didn't say anything out of line.
Don, is there also park, don, is there also lighting?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry?
Lighting?
I said it would be, we directed that the lighting be directed internally.
There is lighting being provided, though.
It will be illuminated, but it'll be directed away from the property.
Away from the building, so it doesn't go into our residents' windows. Okay, thank you.
It will be brighter than the current lot that it is today, because there's reflected light, but no direct light.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, you can be excused. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a comment on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Apologies to item D, SD 2020-8, Park Hill Edition, Block 100, Lots 1 through 4, Replat of Property at 4133 JFK Boulevard. The applicant was present, agreed to items 1 through 5 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted, is the applicant here?
John Palnil again, with Thomas Engineering.
And you've been submitted a copy of the recommendations from the Design Review Committee, are you in agreement with these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item S is F, is SD 2020-11, John S. Braddock Subdivision, Lot 18R1, Replat and Site Plan Review of a Warehouse Located on Rogers Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items 1 through 9 and subsections, Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
This motion is made and seconded, this be approved as submitted, is the applicant representative here?
Yes, Bear Davidson, Davidson Engineering, on behalf of the applicant.
You have been submitted a copy of the recommendations from the Design Review Committee, are you in agreement with these?
We are.
Please let the record note that I am not participating in the discussion on this application, and I will excuse myself from voting on it. Anyone in the audience would like to comment on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the report of the Development Review Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move right into our public hearing. Our first case is conditional use number 2020-2 to allow a tire store in a C4 zone located at 2115 Highway 161. Is the applicant here? You did come before the Design Review Committee and were furnished, have you been furnished a copy of the conditions, recommendations from the Design Review Committee?
Yes, sir, we have.
Do you agree with those?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Deats? Velasco?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster? Chambers?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Item number two is.
Thank you, sir.
Conditional case number 20-3 to allow an upholstery business in a CL zone located at 909 West 35th. Give us your name, please.
Sam Emmerling, I'm the owner of the building.
Okay.
I'm here for the tenant that would like to rent a small section of my property to do an upholstery business.
Okay. Have you and your tenant saw the conditions to be considered from the planning commission?
Yes.
And do you agree with those?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? Has there been any call-ins on this, Mr. Spencer?
We have not received any.
On the application, please call the roll.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster? Deats?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, conditional use case number 20-4 to allow outdoor auto storage in an I-1 zone located on the northeast corner of Smokey Lane and East 46th Street. Okay. This was on the. Is the applicant here? Who is going to be representing this? This is the same one for the McLarty?
The conditional use associated with the parking lot.
And.
This Philip Lewis. Phil, he went out to show his drawings to the ladies, and he may have just left.
Can you get him?
I don't think we got his number, do we?
Okay.
He's standing out there.
We will go to special use case number 20-3 to allow a daycare in an R3 zone located at 2015 Main Street. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Seeler with Lighthouse Academies.
Ma'am. You came before the Design Review Committee?
Yes, sir.
And some items were discussed. Have you been furnished a copy of those?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with those?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On this application, please call the roll.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster? Velasco?
Yes.
Deats? Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Special use case number 20-20-20-4 to allow daycare in an I-2 zone located at 12 Longmail Curve Court.
Hello, my name is Brianna Slaughter.
I'm sorry, again?
My name is Brianna Slaughter.
Yes, ma'am, okay. You have been. Provided a copy of the conditions from the Design Review Committee, do you agree with those conditions?
I agree.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor of this application, please call the roll.
Velasco?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster? Chambers?
Yes.
Deats?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
You guys have a nice day.
If you are here for rezone case number 2020-3 to rezone from R1 to R4 for a second dwelling at 4314 North Cypress Street that has been removed from our agenda. at 4314 North Cypress Street that has been removed from our agenda, sorry I didn't call that off at the first of the meeting, if you are here for it. Is anyone here for that application? Okay. We will move to item number seven, 2020-4 to rezone from R1 to C4 to recognize an existing liquor store at 6012 Crystal Hill Road. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Give us your name, please.
Craig Friedman with Friedman Law Firm, also a partner in Red Devil Investments, who's the purchaser of this property. And the seller, Cheryl Dees is here as well.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Sean, have you had any call-ins on this?
Had one asking what was going on.
I'm sorry?
Just had one asking what was going on, and we explained to them they were fine with what was happening.
Okay. On the application, please call the roll.
Deets?
Yes.
Velasco? Yes. Chambers?
Yes.
Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go back to item number four. And have they came back in? Oh.
Mr. Davidson's going to represent him, cover.
Oh, okay.
Bear Davidson, on behalf of Philip Lewis Engineering.
Okay.
Questions, yes, indeed. How are you handling the tension on the side?
We're working through that with the city engineer's office.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll get an invoice for this time.
Recommendation from the planning staff is approve with conditions. You have been submitted a copy of the conditions to be considered. Are you in agreement with these?
We are.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster? Chambers?
Yes.
Deets? Velasco? Yes. Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Please advise the engineer that we would have no choice but to postpone, because there was no one here to represent him.
Thank you.
Yeah. Save him 30 days.
That concludes our agenda. Is there anyone having any public comments or announcements they'd like to make, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, we used to have a tradition of staff reporting on how some of our items were disposed by the city council. Is there anything of significance that's happened lately in terms of disagreements with us or anything like that?
I'm, nothing is jumping out, so everything that you have approved has gone through with your recommendation, a positive recommendation, and they've approved it based on that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Foster?
We're still in the same... Yep, so not until they're done reviewing, then we make those changes and get it back to you.
I was going to say, you could put Mr. Mosley on the spot and ask him.
I think he would be fine. He's on the ball.
You know, we've kind of gone to use instead of zoning on those items. You know, I just see around town, even during holiday seasons, we see a lot of asphalt out there. You know, and that's one of our assets that this city has, is the amount of trees that we have to offset our carbon footprint, so to speak. And it's a burden, you know, parking lots are expensive to build, and I just hate to see, you know, developers develop those parking lots, and you see where I'm going with that. I know we've kind of downsized the minimum standards in this to some extent. I haven't really been able to do a comparison, but like just for a shopping center, where did we come up with the requirements that we have in there? You know, did we get advice from some of the shopping center developers around, or strip center developers?
The old or the new? The old process or the new process?
New process.
So, we hired a consultant, and he gave us some numbers to work with, but a lot of it, instead of looking at like a Walmart...
Yeah, yeah.
As one big square footage, we're going to look at the office area. We'll have requirements, and then we'll figure out the storage area, and then the general retail. So, instead of looking at all with general retail, the offices, you know, require three people that work in the office or something, as opposed to that being counted as square footage of sales. So, we're looking at the use inside the building also.
Well, has that been run by any of our, you know, like the Matthews Properties, you know, Ashley's Development, Simon's Properties, or anybody like that to get their input?
No, it has not. I can get more information where the Garber Engineering got the numbers from.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. I don't know if there's a standard somewhere. We can kind of get a comparison to what we're comparing to. You know, like, there's cities here in Arkansas that don't have minimum standards, they have maximum standards for parking. And I've understood that that's not very good, because they are running out of parking up there, and a lot of the shopping centers are, you know, having to come back from variances and ask for that, to add some parking, because just to be able to maintain the overflow during the holiday seasons. And that's the last thing they want, is their customers to go down the road where there's a parking space. So, I mean, it's a fine balance there. But then again, I'd like, you know, let's revisit that a little bit next time we get together and see. I don't know if we have the, we can do that fine balance or not, but yeah. Second thing I wanted to mention is, has there been any other development with, is it Bentonville or Fayetteville on their, what do you call it, Airbnb?
Short-term rental?
Yeah, short-term rental, thank you.
We downloaded everything from Bentonville, I think it was. And we have it, and we've talked, somebody has talked to one of the older persons, council members, about it, so we're sort of waiting from, to hear, you know, for us to go ahead and start doing something, but we've got all the information in our hands.
But they got, they did adopt theirs, is my understanding, is that correct?
It looks like they have. You know, there's always, so many days it could be turned over, so I think it's, I think those days have passed, so it's been passed. But we'll go online and email you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. Or just next time we meet, it'd be fine. But I, you know, while we're, while we're in, you know, revising this, I'd like to, you know, maybe bring that forward and put it in here.
Well, I think the definition would be in our book, it would be a standalone ordinance.
Right.
So, it wouldn't be something in the zoning, but we could define...
Okay.
The term, whatever we want to call it, but we could define that in the book.
Okay. And as we're talking about this rezoning, you know, a lot of times in our meetings, you know, we've discussed the revisions of this, and, you know, you've done a great job with moving this thing forward. You know, a lot of our questions came up, is, you know, they're not really covered in the zoning, but they're covered in our municipal code. Is legal looking at municipal code to see if there are some revisions in there that make this thing dovetail better together with this?
We're looking, yes, Commissioner, we're looking at the entire code for purposes of codifying all of our ordinances and looking at them for content. Once this is complete, my anticipation is that it will dovetail with that, because of the ordinances we've pulled that are not codified, most of them are zoning.
Yeah.
I've looked at this, and so once the new zoning ordinance is done, that obviates the need to incorporate old zoning ordinances that are now effectively superseded by this new zoning ordinance when it's done. But the simple answer to your question is yes.
Kind of further that little discussion a little bit further. I'm hoping I'm not boring everybody, but, you know, one of the things that it seems like we keep coming back to, to try to enforce, you know, some of our codes and things like that, seemed like we bring up the public nuisance. You know, and I'm talking about, you know, furniture and stuff being dumped in people's front yards and, you know, and just cluttering, those kind of things, people leaving trash cans at the curb, storing their trash cans result on their front porches, you know, and just, you know, and I think sometimes that kind of thing comes under a public nuisance, but does our public nuisance really kind of cover those kind of things?
That...
It's kind of, this is kind of effort. When I drive around, and it's not just being the less affluent neighborhoods, I've seen some pretty nice neighborhoods, it's just kind of creeping in on. So, I mean, just like here in Lakewood, the front door to the park, you know, off of McCain is a true example of what I'm talking about. So, I don't know what we can do about that, and I'm just thinking maybe at this time, while we're kind of going through this exercise, we can maybe address that.
It's chapter eight of the municipal code, which is the property maintenance code. It deals with both outdoor storage, public nuisances, and everything that you just mentioned. Once a month, I am the prosecutor in code enforcement court and district court. Our code enforcement officers work very hard. They're fair, but aggressive, and at least since I've been prosecuting code, we take it very seriously, and I take at least one or two calls on this week.
Do you?
Yes, sir.
How many code enforcement officers do we have?
Well, I know that when we go to court, five, not including, five that actually are out on the road in different zones, you know, every zone you can think of. And it's not just one area, although there are some more prominent, or more often some areas we get, certainly. But let me tell you, Commissioner, if it's bad enough, we have sued two or three individuals, property owners, both of them after suit have complied with our code. We have the power to tick it, and our code enforcement officers do that, and they can be fined, an individual who's violating the property maintenance code. And then, of course, if a property itself is dilapidated enough, we have the power to condemn with sufficient notice and an opportunity to be heard.
You know, if anything's being done, there's on, right off of east of Interstate 30, you come through North Rock, there's two houses that butt the fronting road there that have been pretty much destroyed by fire, and they just sit and sit and sit. I'm sure that's a long process to get that cleaned up.
It's, we call it a burnout, yeah. I have not spoken specifically to code enforcement officer Petty or Felicia McHenry at Code about those. I've seen them myself. Next week, we have Code Court. Between now and then, I'll have a conversation, and I'll report back at the next planning commission meeting.
Kind of like right at our front door to our city, you know, and then when people drive through, that's, you know, I don't want that to be an impression they think of North Rock, Arkansas.
No, I agree, but you, we, you know, we do give due process to people.
Well, yeah, I know, we have to do that.
It's a property right, and we do, we do that correctly, and you know, our property code has been, there's been a lawsuit that's pending now that there, we won, and they're appealing to the Arkansas Supreme Court, defending as written our property maintenance code and the way we give notice and due process. This regards the Gentleman's Club property from years ago.
Wow.
It's now on appeal to the Arkansas Supreme Court. So, I will say that I think we give due process, and I think in those instances, I assure you that the code enforcement is aware of them, but as out of, to follow, to be completely full circle here, I'll talk to Code about it. I've seen them too. You know, but it's like whack-a-mole sometimes. You remember that game at the, you hit one thing, and the other one comes up, and you hit the one thing, and the other one?
Yeah, yeah.
Whack-a-mole. You know, that's sort of what we deal with sometimes with code enforcement. Commissioner Chambers?
Just to clarify, we do not have any inspectors at work after 4:30, Monday through Friday, and on weekends.
Well, I mean...
Code enforcement folks.
Not scheduled, that I know, but I will tell you this, just like a police officer, if you see a violation when you're out and about, there's nothing prohibiting you from doing something about it, but no, on schedule, my understanding is that that's where it ends.
I'm speaking more in terms of people doing illegal construction on weekends and after 4:30, because they know that no one will catch them.
Well, you know, we've dealt with that with another, I want to be careful about how I say this. It's difficult, because we don't have, you know, weekend, but if somebody sees something going on, drop a dime, call code enforcement, call me, I'll drop a dime.
Mr. Deets?
You know what I'm saying by drop a dime, right? Remember the old days, we'd drop a dime?
What number should we call?
I asked several times about why we couldn't have a situation like the Board of Adjustment. I talked to Sean several times about it, and he said he was working on it, and then it finally came. And by the way, I really appreciate, you know, us being able to see that, and I think the people in the audience appreciate it. But, and I would have told you sooner, but I've been gone for about three months, and I really appreciate your effort on getting that done, because I think it makes for a better meeting.
Yes.
Took a while to get it done right, so.
May I add one thing, Commissioner Chambers? I told you to call code enforcement in the situation, the hypothetical you described, and that is somebody doing construction over the weekend. To be honest with you, that's the building official, and that is under community planning, but that would be Roger Green, Arnold Coleman, that was who you would call for that. But if you see something going on, on the weekend, if you can't get anybody else, call me, I'll get somebody on the horn. Now, can I get anything done about it? I'm not suggesting that I can, I'm here to give advice.
I just figure you have to get it, catch them red-handed, you just can't.
Not necessarily. Evidence, you know, circumstantial, if you can use circumstantial evidence to send somebody to jail for the rest of their life, I suspect you can use circumstantial evidence to prosecute a building, which is chapter four of the municipal code, a building regulation.
Okay. Okay. Second. Motion made and seconded. We adjourned. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.
I didn't bore everybody.